I'd like to call to order the February Town Lloyd zoning board of appeals meeting. Please stand for the flag allegiance. Flag allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. There's no smoking. Please turn your cell phones to silent and he exits her in the back of the room. Public hearing, long Stephen, Miriam, area variance fifteen Lockhart Lane, SBL eighty-eight point thirteen dash eight dash seven. Applicants seeking an area variance of seven feet to install a thirteen foot tall fence. Review status, updated application, survey and photos circulated to the board, potential action, open public hearing. Okay, if the applicants want to step forward. So unless you all were here, I think we all agreed that thirteen foot was not going to happen. So I take it you've amended your application to eight feet. Just to clear everything up, I think I gave you a little bad information on the last meeting. When I said that you could plant arborvitae's, that also would be considered offense. I misspoke. I apologize. Does any member of the board have any questions for the applicant before we open the public hearing? Is there anything new you guys want to present other than amended height?
We gave you everything, so.
Okay, nothing's changed. Neighbor didn't move away. We gotta ask, right? Okay, so just hang out there. We're gonna open the public hearing. Maintain a motion to open the public hearing. Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so before we get to the written part, is there any member of the public here this evening that wishes to be heard on this matter? Is there anyone on Zoom or? Okay, nah, you can. You just take it easy, old area. All right, so we did, we did receive correspondence on February tenth. The board, this was circulated via email. I'll read it into the record. February sixth, twenty twenty-five. To the town zoning board, I, Stephen Toth, seventeen Lockhart Lane, do oppose the granting of variance at fifteen Lockhart Lane to extend their fence to eight feet for the following reasons. They installed a twelve foot four by four in violation to the town's code of having a six inch setback from the property line. The four by fours are against my fence and by town code should be twelve inches away from my fence. I was required to survey my property by the town, which I did, and the town certified my survey as accurate and true. I was acquired, I was required to install my fence with a six inch setback from my own property line, which I did with town approval. And.
They didn't.
Granting, nope, not yet. And granting a CO for the fence. Secondly, fifteen Lockhart Lane, in addition to installing the twelve foot four by fours on my property in violation of town code, are now building a board fence, which is unsightly and installed on the wrong side of the four by fours in violation of town code. The fence must be taken down and removed from my property as it is in violation of town code. Thank you. Stephen Toth, owner. Mr. Toth has provided us with some photographs. Not the best photographs. I looked through them. I don't know if the board, the rest of the board had a chance to, to look through them. The sticky notes on there, I mean, it kind of gives you an idea, but you really can't tell from the pictures what they're denoting. I mean, by his narrative and by what he's showing us here, I, I think I get the gist of, of what he's trying to point out. So with that being said, we're gonna leave the public hearing open. If, if in fact we do decide tonight, we'll close it, but. So here's, here's my feeling. The letter that was written basically is saying the twelve foot four by fours are in violation, which they are, the setback, which is, it's in violation, which it is, the direction of the fence is in violation, which it is. So to mitigate that, if they take all of that down and put up the right fence in the right location.
What fence are they talking about?
That's right.
Hold on, we're gonna talk about this for a minute. First of all.
Not yet.
All right, go ahead.
If we, if we do approve the eight foot extension, even if we don't, they can do it at six feet. They'd be required to put it in as per code, as per the building department. So if that's done, anything that was written, and my, and you guys can, can jump in on this, the concerns that the neighbor has are all with the existing conditions. We can run through it real quick. So there's an, there's an issue with the twelve foot four by fours. So if they're gonna install the fence the proper way, twelve foot four by fours don't fly, so they have to be removed. So that would mitigate that concern by the neighbor.
Or reduce to eight feet.
The setback of six inches from the property line, if they do put up a new fence, they would be held to the standard. So that would be mitigated. So the survey, that part is, it is what it is.
Fence on the proper side.
Right, so the, the fence, as, as I, we have a picture here that kind of shows you what it looks like. It's, it's facing the wrong way. So if they do put up another fence, be six or eight feet, that would have to be mitigated. The fence would have to face, the aesthetic side of the face would have to face the neighbors as per town code. So if in granting a variance at eight feet, they would be held to those standards, which in my feelings would mitigate any concern of the neighbor. Because according to this, the, the neighbor has a problem with it being too tall, being too close to the property line, and being the wrong orientation. So it, all of those factors would be mitigated, even if you put up a six foot fence, you'd have to put it up to code. So all of that stuff would have to be removed and you'd have to put it up to code. It would be six feet, foot off, aesthetic side to the neighbors, whether you get the six or eight, or whether you get the eight or not, those would have to be followed, which anything on the correspondence from the neighbor, I believe would be, would be mitigated. We would, we would have taken care of those concerns.
Good.
So there is, there is a few things that I think we should point out in the code. Again, the one thing was, was I misspoke about the trees or shrubs. I apologize. And then. And Anthony, maybe you could help me a little bit with this, because the verbiage I don't quite understand. Subsection C is in all conflicts of interpretation of a sideline or rear line, the height of the wall or fence applicable shall be the lower height allowed. Is that referring to?
If it's talking about the intersections or where you're going to come up to a drive where you can't see?
That, that's the two and a half.
Right.
And I, that's why I wanna, I wanna verify the verbiage, seeing that that's what it's considered, right? Rear line or side, if it's in that eye shot of an intersection, it's to the two and a half feet. Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
And then it's got the whole thing about how it's supposed to be back from the intersection.
Yeah, right. But I just wanted to make sure that subsection E was related to B, which is the two and a half foot at an intersection and I just want to clarify that, that that's what it's related to. That's the way I read it, but I want to make sure that you guys, because you're the ones who's going to enforce it.
Right.
You read it the same way, correct?
We have to determine which, this is pretty simple, because we know that's a side yard, but sometimes it's not that easy.
Okay, okay, and that's what it speaks to?
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay. Does the board have any questions, comments?
I don't.
Okay, and I know you guys wish to be heard.
Yeah, they're almost on our property with their fence, and you can visibly see this when you get in there.
We submitted pictures to show where their fence was.
The property line is in a straight line.
They are not in front of this board for a variance?
Right, but this is part of the reason why we pushed up the fence right on, because they're, they're shoving the fence on the bottom now and the top over.
But I, but I will tell you, regardless
Regardless of that.
Of what your neighbors do, you have to abide
All right, so then we'll have to bring them up with them and get, get taken care of.
They, you bring it up, they have to go out, and if the neighbors want to come to this board and seek a variance, they can do that, they're right. But I just want to let you guys know what their concerns were and what has to be followed to get a CO from the building department. You guys are clear on that, right? Everybody's, everybody's good.
Yeah, yeah, but that was the reason why we did what we did, because the way they put their fence pushing up on us, so.
So even if we put up a fence, we want to keep the four by four posts, because they're just pushing their way over.
But the posts gotta be on your side.
Well.
It won't be part of the fence. We're pushing, we want the posts in there to keep them off our property. They're pushing their whole fence over onto our property.
And they have it going.
We have a picture we gave you. You could see it.
You could actually see it.
The property line is in a straight line. Their fence goes shoot.
Well, that's gonna be all taken care of. So that's the survey of the property right there.
That's a survey. We had a survey, and that's why we circled two thousand and five. The gentleman came to me and said, you better have a survey and builder permit, and we got it.
We did.
And they never got one, but yeah, but this is the survey, and that's.
But that's what their fence comes in, like they get pushed.
We'll take care of that, we're, you know, we're gonna figure out what to do with this.
We understand what you're saying.
As you come off the property.
Just to be clear, Steve, when we had the problem with them with the fence they put up that was on your property, and it was, surveyor came back, he marked out the, he marked the points, and they moved the fence accordingly to where it's supposed to be. I was there, I saw it, so I know it's where it's supposed to be, what happens after that?
Yeah, it's pushed over.
Well, that's, yeah, but I know it's right on that line.
All right, at what line, six inches?
Now you're gonna have a foot between their post and your post.
More than that.
Six inches from their.
Six inches on each side. It's a foot.
Huh? One foot.
It's one foot.
One foot.
Right.
One foot.
So.
From the back of their post to the back of your.
Promise the, yeah, of the back of their post, it's in the ground. All right, we'll, we'll see. So see, this, the fence, you, we gotta show you the fence. The fence is not straight. It bows right towards the property.
I would put yours.
It's a chain link. It's a chain link fence, so yeah, possibly.
So.
Put yours up the way.
Yeah, because we have markers, it's plenty of markers right there to see.
But that's why we put, he put it up so close, it wouldn't come.
They're pushing.
Pushing more on.
We'll take it down, we'll get a six inches off.
Okay, but.
But this isn't on their property. None of this is on their property. That's our property, right where that marker is, and that's where their fence is.
But you guys are gonna have to start all over again, start from day one.
Yeah, that is.
Both, both of you.
Yeah, but I think we do, yep.
So.
Get them involved too. Let's play a game.
Regardless of.
You know, there's two markers, twenty, twenty feet away, but a piece of string, you can see it's a straight line. That's not a straight line.
Regardless of their fence to this board? Doesn't matter. It's on their side.
To come off what they're saying their property line is, well, now we're having a problem with that, so now.
I'm just saying.
We're gonna have to get more of it.
I'm saying that.
Becoming one big game.
You need to maintain, regardless of what they do.
Property line, not their fence.
The property line, not the fence.
Six inches off their property.
That doesn't matter. Everything goes from the property line, and as far as the four by fours, they can't stay at twelve feet.
No, 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 they, we, we.
I just, I just want to make that clear, because you said, well, we want to leave them there to hold the fence back and all of that.
The twelve foot, but we.
That's going to be a determination of the building department, whether they.
Our case with them and the property.
As far as, as far as this fence is concerned, those four by fours cannot be incorporated with this fence, because they don't meet the requirement of the setback. They're gonna have to say, well, the four by fours stay, go, they're part of the fence. As far as this board is concerned, if they're closer than the setback, they can't be part of the fence.
Well, you can say I'm not part of the fence, which means they're keeping their fence off our property.
Again, I'm just, I'm just being very, very clear of what we're looking for.
Becoming not good. Real quick, we have a picture of their fence right here. We gave it to you. The fence is, like, you could see.
I'm not arguing with you at all.
All right.
That's a chain link fence, right?
Yep.
The concrete, the posts and the ground and all that stuff where?
Yep.
And again, that doesn't matter to us.
All right, so we're gonna just stay with the property line.
We have to do everything from the property line.
So we'll get what's.
That's the setback.
Six inches off the property.
Right, I just want no miscon, because you did say, well, I'm gonna lead the four by four, I just want to make sure you're clear that that's not part of the fence. The fence is a foot off. All right.
All right. I want the fence up.
Being being that this is a touchy subject, I'm going to have our attorney do a draft resolution in favor of an eight foot fence. I will, I'll have him prepare it, so at the next meeting, we will be able to vote, barring anything happening, if nothing changes from right now, we'll be able to approve it. I'd feel more comfortable, given by the color from nature of your relationship with your neighbor. I want to do it according to HOIL. I want to have our attorney draft the resolution, so it's a hundred percent bulletproof. And then everybody, all parties concerned can rest assured.
Sure.
That sounds great.
Do we need a straw poll before we give it to the attorney?
We, we can, but I think for this, I think he can draft the resolution, and we can do it then, because it's, it's fairly straightforward. I mean, if you guys want to do a straw poll, we can, but I think it's fairly straightforward. If you, if everybody's good with it, all right.
Basically instructions.
Right, so we're, we're gonna leave the public hearing open, as we always do, right up to the time of the vote, and we will see you next meeting, and we'll have a draft resolution for the acceptance of the variance. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have you had any other questions, Drake? You guys are good?
Good.
Okay. Continued public hearing. Sicily, 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 Sicily? Sicily. Richard, area variance eighteen Falcon Drive, SBL eighty-six point four dash three dash thirteen. Applicant is seeking an area variance of twenty-three point three feet for a side yard setback to build a garage. Review status, public hearing opened. So we're continuing it, we're, all right.
Last time I was here, everybody asked for elevation, so that's what I did. I took your advice, so I'm gonna give you guys some maps that I made.
I thought you were gonna call me. I offered up my services.
I wasn't gonna bother you.
Ah, that's all right.
I know when I leave work, you have to try to leave.
I'm never home, so it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So just give us a little, before you, before you sit down, just give us a little.
I'm gonna grab my own here.
Okay.
So at the very top, you're gonna see twelve five, twenty-five, thirty-seven, five, fifty, sixty-two, five. That's feet from the.
From the property line, yep.
All right.
Yep.
Under that, you're gonna see negatives, right? So negative point zero six, negative point zero four, zero, zero, which is the edge of the driveway, which is what I consider my, kind of like my zero.
Your bench, yep, perfect.
Plus four, and then right before the garage itself, it's a plus one foot.
Okay.
And then as you go, look, start looking down or south, you're gonna see a number that's twenty-five on the left-hand side, to the left of your finger, there, almost by the.
Yep, yep, right here.
And then fifty, those how many, those are how many feet from that, that original line that I put out back?
To the back of the, yeah, absolutely.
And then, of course, all your negative numbers, right? So negative one point two feet.
And that's off the bench of zero point zero zero, thirty-seven point five foot mark.
Yep.
Perfect.
Kind of makes sense?
Yeah.
I think I did it right.
Makes absolute sense. You ever give up what you're doing, you become a surveyor. Okay, so I know, does any, does any member of the board have any questions?
Is this twenty-five foot the building?
The building itself is thirty-one foot long by eighteen foot wide.
Eighteen.
So, and where you have, at your thirty-seven, five, you have the zero, zero, you have a negative point nine feet, or is that nine inches? Are you doing it in feet and inches, or?
Uh, feet, inches, so that's, so at twenty-five, that's.
So it actually slopes away from the house?
Yep.
And then it slopes to the back?
Yep, everything is pitched, pitched away from the house, yep.
Okay, so does anybody have any, anything for the applicant before I start taking off and running and we'll?
I just had a quick question. What's the height you're looking at in this?
Uh, for the wall?
For the garage.
Yep, for, it's gonna, it's gonna be thirteen foot walls itself. Uh, it says.
I got it.
Yeah, here's your.
Somewhere in there it does say what the, what the peak height will be. Yep.
Okay. So we're continuing the public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to be heard that is here now? Is anyone on Zoom or whatever that wishes to be heard? Okay, so we can jump into this thing. So I know previous discussions, I personally felt comfortable with a twenty-five foot setback, which would put you, the width of the building, let's say, what'd you say it was, eighteen total?
Yeah.
It's eighteen total.
So nine feet over, so we can use the thirty-seven point five elevation line as a fairly decent benchmark. And from your driveway, how far off? Can we bring that up, Sarah, the original site plan?
I was gonna do eight feet off the driveway.
Eight feet off the driveway, so you're, so you're about in here, so I'm gonna say that's a little less than midpoint. So your zero, zero to two, you're gonna have eighteen inch fill maybe at the front of the building, if we hold the twenty-five foot setback. So we're gonna put you put you about right here. Thirty-one feet long?
Thirty-one feet long.
All right, it's gonna put us right in there. So let's say we got a, this is gonna be. Oh, you see inches, I'm a bit. Just one point five, two, three. Yeah, but he's gotta have an apron, right? So you're gonna say six feet over here, you have six feet of material, and then you're gonna want to zero it out, right? You're not gonna wanna, it's not gonna want to go like this and then up to the building. So you're gonna start at a zero point over here, come across kind of flat to the building, and then pitch it off when it goes in the direction of your house. So, and you, your original quantities was for a thirty-five foot setback. That was your original quantities for, for fill, so.
And I, I do have something I could add to that, if you like.
Sure.
Um, so I, I remeasured it. With moving it over about another four and a half feet, it could be doable with minimal cost, right? Because I'm trying to, the whole financial thing.
Right.
With, um, so technically it wouldn't be eleven point seven, would be eleven point seven plus four, fifteen point seven, or, right, yeah, fifteen point seven.
You lost me. Fifteen point seven.
Off the property.
Off the, yeah. That's a little too close. I'm being as upfront as I possibly can be. It's a, they require thirty-five. Personally, I'm comfortable with twenty-five, because that's a fairly standard for the town, other than an ag zone. You're in an ag zone, but on that side, it's not an agricultural operation, it's, it's a residential operation. I believe on the other side, it's ag, right?
You're gonna write in me is, uh, hers, yeah, Charlie.
Right. So that being said, the materials cost would go down, moving at twenty-five as opposed to thirty-five, and it's fairly considerable, because you're going from, say, three feet to five. And it's fairly considerable because you're going from, say, three feet to five feet, so two foot. It's a pretty decent, pretty decent amount.
What has to do with?
Just doing a quick, quick calc in my head.
Side view. Five foot deep. Again, minus three over here will be.
Where are you looking? Right.
Minus three, that's gonna be close to three, and that's minus, you said this is gonna be five, six over here
Right.
With a slope.
Right, which you gotta remember, right? You're gonna hold like a two on one, right? You're not gonna have something real steep off the side of the building. So whatever footprint you come up with, you're gonna have to run it down to zero. So it would be a four foot here, or down to zero here.
And five.
18 by 31?
31. About here. Almost four feet. That's where he's gonna end up, start from.
Right.
Five foot six.
What was your original quantity? 108, right? 108 yards?
Right here, sir. Yeah, it is here. Somewhere around here, here it is. Uh, 104 cubic yards is what they put here.
So we're gonna get you way less than that. All right, does anybody have? Sarah, could you get me a copy of the criteria, the five questions, just so I don't, uh, put them out of order or screw them up? Oh, wow, look at this little thing. Pretty cool.
I got it right in my book.
Look at that.
Looks like you're about to wring me my rights.
So i- is the rest of the board comfortable with a 25 foot?
Yes.
I, I feel it's very generous.
So you're, you're not comfortable or you're, you're okay with it?
I'm very co, I've seen, I'm comfortable with 25 feet. That's very, it's, it's in, like you said, it's in characteristic of the town and, um, like you said, this is basically on the side where he's trying to get onto is.
It, it's a residential.
Residential zone.
So what this board's function is, we have to grant the least possible. Um, and, and you do have a legitimate concern. Um, I drove there, it's, it's going up. I, I understand, I understand completely. I'm comfortable with 25. I, I believe the rest of the board is. Your feelings on that, are you?
If, if there was any way we could push it out, even, you know, even mitigating the financial, just a little bit further from the house, so if we were if, if the 25 foot's approved, it's only gonna be about 26 foot from the house. Another five foot would give me 30 foot from the house, which would then gain me another parking spot. Does that make sense? So if I were to park in front of my garage now, in my house I have now, I wouldn't be able to get into this garage. Another five foot probably would get me that.
So you're eight feet off, I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, you're eight foot off, yes.
Right, I'm just trying to follow your, your train of thought there. I lost you.
So at a 25 foot setback
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as proposed, if I were to back up to my house I am at right now, with my pickup truck, right, I wouldn't be able to get into that garage unless I was, my bumper was kissing the garage door of my house, right? Which obviously nobody ever parks like that. Right, we always leave at least four feet or so, right? If I were to be able to get maybe even another, you know, five feet, I would still gain another parking.
Just on, on here, right?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying you're eight feet off here, right?
Yep.
So you're saying if we bring it over here?
Yep, it's gonna be 25, 25 to 26 feet off the, the house itself, right?
Wait, so I'm not, I'm not picking up what you're putting down, parking.
So if I were to be, so if I were to park right there where your pen is, right, I wouldn't be able to pull into that garage.
On that, your proposed garage?
I'm sorry, proposed garage, proposed garage.
You couldn't back into that? Like you couldn't?
It, it was, the front of the car would essentially block it.
But you'd be eight feet this way?
Yes, but the car would be parked, this, the, the house is.
Your, your truck is this.
Yes, exactly, 100%, yep.
Three, three.
So you want to be able to go like that?
No, I just want to be able, be able to have somebody else to pull up the driveway into the garage.
Nine, 20 feet. It's 20 feet from the garage. The garage corner to the house is 20 feet.
That's even less than what I thought it was.
I don't know if I gotta raise it.
You lost me on the whole parking thing. I was right there when.
It's six feet, 60, 62, 5 to the house.
It's.
No, that's, no, that's not true.
No, it's not. It's, so I'm going from that 40 foot mark, right, from, if you look there, I put 40 foot. So 11.7 plus 13, 3 would put me at the 25 foot setback, which gives me like 26 foot.
26 feet between the corner of that to the corner of the garage, 26 feet. You can't get a truck?
It'd be close. And I, I would have to, the bumper would have to be kissing the garage.
I'm with you, but I don't know if I buy it. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, I get it. Um, but I'm as it is right now, it's 10 feet of relief.
And, and I thank the board for taking the time.
Which is, which is significant. I mean, 10 feet is, is a lot. When you get past 10 feet, one of the criteria is, is it the least amount you can do? I, I would have, I'd have an issue with that. Um, and we, we exhausted any other, uh, possible, and I'm doing this because of the criteria. We exhausted any other possible, uh, areas to place it. We'd said this kinda
I'm back up to the board. This kinda drops off pretty deep over here. Part of our thing is, can it be, can it be achieved by any other means? So
I've read, yep.
You can't put it out here because that's in your front yard, that would be an, an even bigger ask. Um, you can't put it over here, right? There's
Conservation easement?
Right, well, not, not an easement, I'm just talking about over in here without coming past.
The septic.
It would still be in front of your house, so this is the only place, and you're saying your well is here and this is, this is, uh, elevation changes with like wetlands and, and kinda deep, right?
That's wet back there, there is a, a pretty big child swing set for my kids and stuff like that, but yes, yep.
Okay, so I, I'm okay with saying he feasibly can't put it anyplace else except for where we're gonna do it.
Correct.
Everybody else is gonna agree to that?
I agree with that. But can he put it legally? Legally, any place on his property, without a variance?
Yes. He can legally put it someplace on it because he can move it all the way over here. And then that's a, a five foot fill. Um, it's closer to his house. He can't turn his truck, we went through that.
All right.
It, it is, it is feasible, but I'm comfortable. It, it is, but I am comfortable with the decision.
I'm qu, with 25, I'm very comfortable, but I.
Okay, so let's, let's, uh, let's straw poll. Let's go through it really, really quick here. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Um.
Yes.
The answer would be yes, but due to circumstances with topography, um, and aesthetics, I don't, I don't feel it would be feasible. Um, and Sarah, you're, you're getting this in a minute, right? So we can, we can relay this to Paul. Um, so i- is the board comfortable with that? Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant? The answer is yes, but do the, what I've already stated, we're, we're comfortable with it.
Yes, 25 feet.
Okay.
We, I feel there could be the overall impact on financial hardship would be going making him go to hold 30, 35 feet would be.
It would not be feasible. It would not be.
Practical. It wouldn't be out, it wouldn't be practical to do it. Financially and aesthetically and everything else.
Um, whether it's an undesirable change in the neighborhood, character, or detriment to nearby properties. I don't, I don't feel it would be. Um, the topography of the ground that's there and kinda goes up and whatever, it's, it's really not visible other than from the neighbor, uh, and we're already, we're pushing it 25 feet off. Um, so I don't think it would have an undesirable change. Does everyone agree?
Agreed.
That the, that the change, okay.
I've also visited the neighborhood as you did, and there's other independent garages around that area, so it's, it's not unique.
It's consistent. It's, it's, yeah.
Any great change from the road makes it.
Right. Right.
Absolutely.
Whether the request is substantial. Um, a 10 foot variance is substantial, but in this instance, um,
Overall.
I, I don't, it's not as substantial. It is still 10 feet, but in this instance, I don't feel it's substantial. Everyone comfortable with that?
Good.
Yes.
Whether the request will have an adverse physical or environmental effect. I, I don't believe it will. Um, for, for reasons that the board has previously stated, I do not believe it will have an adverse effect. All right, this is our favorite one. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Of course it's self-created.
Absolutely.
Because you're building a building, you created it. So, but, but that is everyone.
Just quoting your guys from your previous meetings, is it ever not?
It is, it always is, but state puts it on here, so we gotta run with it. Um, so, given the criteria, um, I'd like to direct our attorney Paul to draft a resolution affirming the variance with a 25 foot, 10, 10 foot variance with a 25 foot setback from the property line. Everyone's comfortable with that?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
All right, so the next meeting, we're gonna leave the public hearing open as we always do. Um, just like I told the applicant before you, uh, when you come in, we'll have a draft resolution and unless enough, anything changes significantly, which I don't think it would, um, rip through it and you'd be good to go.
But you you're not gonna do anything that would, uh, financially impair you if something comes up, that somebody throws a snowball at us. Um, I'm just saying, don't
Start anything.
Don't do, not, you put up, you put everything in line, put the dominoes up.
It's too cold.
Put all your, put, check all your boxes and, um, as soon as we give you that thing, you can.
Well, he, he can't start unless he has it anyway. He's an honest man. He's not gonna jump the gun.
If I wasn't honest, I wouldn't be here.
He's not gonna jump the gun. Well, you've been doing this too long.
He might order the building and just say, hey, I'm gonna put it there, one way or another, right? I, I'm not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. I'll see you all around.
We'll see you in a month.
Take care. Thank you.
Financially, I don't know.
All right.
We have seen things change mid.
Moving on. Administrative. Minutes to approve. I have read the minutes as written. Done very well as always. Thank you, Sarah.
Motion to accept as written.
Russ, Bill, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
To entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you in a month.